Pride. Direct them according to your will and to your way. Give them confidence in what is good and what is right. Lord, keep us physically and spiritually. Guard our hearts and minds from any uncleanness. And Lord, keep love at the forefront of our mind. And let love be that God and light in all that we set out to accomplish. Now, Lord, go before us and prepare the way. Make any crooked path straight, Lord. And as we begin these meetings, I ask that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight and for your glory. And God, I ask that you forgive all of our sins, and we will be mindful to forgive those who sin against us. I ask this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, join me humble and proud in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to insert the special meeting call letter?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I make that motion that we insert the special meeting call letter into record.
And I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's have it. I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Dice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Zach Hood, EMA Director, to brief the Commission on the Inclement Weather.
Morning.
Morning, Zach.
Morning, Zach.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to go ahead and call and begin preparations for our county dealing with what is now Tropical Storm Sally. Could very well be Hurricane Sally by today. And so, reason for the request from the Emergency Management Agency on a special meeting is because we've been watching Tropical Storm Sally, and there is a significant concern in terms of the forecasted track, the latest track for Sally to take, which is going to be a more eastern track. And so, what we are looking at is Tropical Storm Sally not only tracking more east, but we're looking at key points and messages that we're receiving from the Weather Service that are beginning to be very concerning. And what we need to do is discuss some of those key points and messages. Let me be able to brief you on that, what I'm hearing that's concerning me, and then also discuss what our posture or what our response for Baldwin County would need to look like going into this afternoon, Wednesday, and Thursday. So, this is going to be a longer event than what we're accustomed to dealing with in tropical weather because of the movement is very slow. And the way it's developing is that it may just very well sit over us for a little while, and it's going to cause some issues. But in the latest briefing from the National Weather Service, there's some key messages. And I think it's very important that we all understand what these messages are, so it's very clear to the public on what our threats are. Water is one of the most deadly things that occur when it comes to weather, and we're expected to get a very large amount in a relatively short amount of time. So, in the latest briefing packet that I was looking at, I want to recap on what we have now and where the predictions are indicated and where they will go. We are under a Tropical Storm warning. We have a hurricane watch. We have a flash flood watch. And the updated forecast track continues to shift east. Steering currents weaken as Sally approaches the mouth of the Mississippi River, so an additional shift eastward is still possible. Be prepared for additional short fused adjustments. So, what we have to look at is we know that it's, you know, in the last two days, we've been talking about an east shift. More than likely, that easterly shift will happen. And what we have to do at this point in time, given the amount of time we have between now and the shift occurs, is to put our county in a response mode so that if we deal with a historic flooding event, we will be able to do so, and it's not going to catch us off guard. So, that leads to our next bullet. And in bold letters, red, is historic flood event possible. So, the rainfall forecast has increased again. Locally, 25 inches of rain is possible, especially in coastal Alabama into parts of southeast Mississippi. Very dangerous rainfall and a potentially historic flooding event is possible. And so, the message comes in two or three times on these slides. And let's see. Forecast track again shifts east. Sally will slow significantly as it approaches the coast, and this will lead to a prolonged event, especially with regard to heavy rainfall, storm surge, strong winds, and dangerous surf. So, we have to take Sally very serious. My concern is we see, okay, this is a tropical storm, predicted to be a category one, in that because it's a smaller storm, there's not a reason to be concerned. Certainly, there's every indication that we need to be concerned about what's going on and what could happen, and I would like us to be prepared. And so, that was the reason for the emergency call request, and I certainly appreciate that. All right, so we're expected to have impacts as early as this evening, primarily going into Wednesday and Thursday would be when we would be very busy as far as dealing with flood threats, especially if we do get the predicted amount of rainfall. So, those are the target days. I have been in communication with our area partners over the weekend and this morning. We do have Fort Morgan Fire Department requesting that we speak with the governor about closing beaches, Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, both on the same page as far as that request. I know the governor's office is looking at what's going on, not only here, but through the state, as far as how this will be a flooding event as well. And so, one clear message that we received from dealing with the coastal communities is they're taking this threat very serious as well. They have removed a lot of their lifeguard stands, a lot of those life safety things that are there. They're pulling them back because of the elements that we're going to be dealing with. So, everyone is on the same page as far as safety of people and getting a clear message out that this is not any storm to play around with. We need to take it very seriously. And if tomorrow we find ourselves in a position of where we are at home, that's where everyone needs to stay. We don't need to get out and try to look at damage, try to get pictures, things like that. Floodwater and flooding is very deadly, and that's the message today. Wayne, would you want me to go over the areas at this point in time or Commissioner's question?
I think, Zach, first, I think we should consider the local state of emergency. I know that's one of the things that we had discussed, and you have it in front of your desk up there. And I believe what Zach has told us, I think that's recommended. Zach, is that correct?
Yes, a local state of emergency is recommended.
Zach, has the governor declared a state of emergency yet for the state of Alabama?
So, that is being considered. When that will happen, I don't know. I would be surprised if it's not as early as today. We have been in communication with our state partners, so that is very clear on what, as far as here in Baldwin, what our needs are in terms of support from the state. And so, my answer is, is I am not sure, but I know that is something that we have discussed.
What about the question?
That's one thing, you know, because, you know, she has to declare it for anything can really actually happen with, you know, as far as having a declaration, you know, you have to have that, and we have to follow, we piggyback what she does.
Exactly. So, what I recommend is that we look at our local state of emergency declaration, and I know that State EMA is working with governor's office, and more than likely, you will see something on a state of emergency as early as today. But there's nothing official on that that I can share at this time.
Okay.
The municipalities also do local state of emergencies?
They do.
So, like Gulf Shores and Orange Beach? I'm just curious.
It is recommended. In conversation with the emergency management coordinators, have been talking with the mayors, that is what is being recommended to those coastal mayors as well, and they are considering doing the same thing as we're doing this morning.
Do you know if they're having meetings this morning?
They are, absolutely. Times, I'm not sure of, but I do know Gulf Shores sometime probably before noon. In Orange Beach, I know they're working out those details and working that whole thing out as well. So, yeah, the answer is yes. I'm just not sure what time.
In terms of our local resolution, is it key that it times with the others, both the state and the cities? And then, we've got some blanks here. What do you recommend in terms of when we should commence that?
Yes, so as far as a county goes, what's important is that we go ahead and send a clear message to not only our public, but to our state government officials that locally we're taking this projection and prediction very seriously, and that it could have a lot of impacts on us. And so, what we want to do is make sure that in communication with the state that we're able to discuss how we have implemented and brought in our local state of emergency so that we can start building resource requests for things that we know we may need from the state in the event that we have a serious issue here over this week.
I was talking to someone on my way up here, and has Mobile declared a local state of emergency? I thought they were talking about maybe opening some shelters because of Dolphin Island, so I was just kind of curious if that coincided with a local state of emergency for them or not.
So, with Mobile County, I'm not sure as far as local state of emergency. I do know that their shelters were opened as assistance for evacuees initially that were coming out of Louisiana.
Oh, Louisiana.
Yeah, so, but obviously now because of the shift east, the shelter may need to be used for residents there. So, especially Dolphin Island down in the south part of county. But as far as a local state of emergency, I don't know what they, I don't know what they will do at this point.
When we grant this, does that mean our shelters not only are standing by, but they're available to be utilized? And how does the public know that? And then, lastly, since we're in the COVID setting that we're in, do our shelters, and maybe they're already prepared, I just don't know, but will we be able to isolate people and test people to make sure that we don't end up spreading something that is an indirect result of trying to deal with the situation?
Commissioner Davis, under a local state of emergency, we do have a list of considerations, shelters being one of those considerations. Right now, it is not a recommendation to, for the Commission to open a shelter.
All right.
Because of the top threat that we're looking at right now is flooding. What our intent and plan is, is to activate our VOAD, our voluntary organization active in disaster. And as the situation develops and rain begins, and we see where the problems will be, it's more appropriate to reach out to VOAD for assistance for individuals impacted by the floods, if we have that, and allow VOAD to assist us in that area so that they can utilize a non-congregate option, meaning that we will not have congregate sheltering. So, that's our early recommendation on that. But certainly, what would be beneficial under a local state of emergency, let's say, you know, it's 2:00 in the morning, and I have to get in touch with Madam Chair to discuss shelters. Well, because we've already had the conversation in the local state, Madam Chair can help me get that shelter open in the event that we had something that was unforeseen. But right now, based on our current condition, our current prediction from the Weather Service, it may be isolated type issues with individuals, especially along our inner inland water regions. And so, that's what we're looking at with VOAD.
I got a question for our attorney, Brad. Do we need a motion to go into a local state of emergency?
Yes, sir, we would need a motion to adopt this declaration.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion we adopt this recommendation.
And I'll second that.
Madam Chairman, I could add, we need to put the commencing time. I would suggest 9:00 AM. Does that work, Zach? Gives him time to get things in place. The declaration requires a time to begin the state of emergency.
Okay.
9:00 AM, okay?
It's just, that'd be perfect.
9:00 AM today?
And the ending date just stays open, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Ending time, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion, and did you second it?
I did.
I was thinking there, didn't know if I heard you or not.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ball and a second by Commissioner Davis to enter into this state of local emergency effective at 9:00 AM this morning. Any discussion before we vote here? None? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
All right.
So, we'll enter into, what else do I need to fill out on here?
Madam Chairman, I think we had mentioned 9:00 AM starting today on both the items in the declaration.
Okay.
I think that will satisfy the adoption of the declaration of-
So, both of those will say 9:00 AM?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, also, in regards to tropical weather, we have a typical list. We go down, and I think staff would like us to just consider these. I think some of these won't be necessary, but just for the sake of discussion, I think we need to talk about those so the Commission can make those decisions. And the first, the third thing on the consideration is opening of shelters, and I'll ask Zach if he has a recommendation. You mentioned that briefly a minute ago, but let's go ahead and talk about that, Zach.
Yes, as far as our county ran shelters, the recommendation here, Wayne, is we will maintain the posture we're currently in, whereas we're ready to open the shelter, but the shelter does not need to be opened at this time. What we're looking at is primarily, again, a high-water flooding type event. And as we have a local state now, what we do is activate our emergency operations center. One of the areas that we will activate is our VOAD, and we will work for them for issues as they begin in terms of individuals that may be displaced from their residences.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is closure of county facilities.
What's your recommendation?
So, I think tomorrow's going to be dangerous for individuals to be on the road, including our county services. And so, my recommendation is that we look at non-essential personnel to remain at home, and essential key personnel, which would be, for this type activation, would be certainly adequate if it was a virtual type situation, but certainly look at the county facilities and the transportation issues that might be, if not by tomorrow morning, an issue by tomorrow afternoon. So, there will be transportation problems that we are getting prepared for.
What's that going to do with our meeting tomorrow that we have scheduled?
So, because we're in a state of local emergency, what, to postpone the meeting?
We don't have to, but we certainly can.
Oh.
It's up to you guys.
Well, I mean, y'all want to-
We could postpone, reschedule.
If we were going to postpone it, I would recommend we postpone it to a date certain, not just indefinitely.
Is there anything in there with like zoning stuff that's going to catch us if we don't want it?
Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not certain of that. I would think that we would-
Vince, Vince is raising his hand there. He's-
Do you have 16? 16 to 18 tomorrow?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Those are postponed, those automatically postponed to the following, to the set meeting. Gotcha. That's right. We also have a liquor license application. Again, the same process with the planning and zoning items. I think if we postpone those meetings, it'll be heard at the scheduled meeting.
Well, I mean-
Do we postpone the meeting is my question.
Right.
Because I think, Zach, do you think it's going to be, because you said essential personnel or non-essential? I mean, I would consider us four up here to be conducting the county business, paying the bills, that kind of stuff that we need to meet tomorrow to get that done.
But on public hearings, the people won't be, we would be asking people from the public, so those, I think, would be difficult to, if we're closing other things and asking someone-
With the public hearing, you're right.
The process would be interrupted.
Yeah, exactly. I think the public hearing could pose a bit of a problem, just from the practical perspective, but also from the, I guess, the optics of it, where we have, we're inviting people to come and speak to a particular item, but it's not, the weather's not conducive to-
What is the notification requirement for a reschedule, you know?
Especially called meeting requires five days' notice under 1138.
Okay, so if we're on a Monday right now, can we reschedule it for-
You could move it a week.
Next Monday or next Tuesday?
Madam Chair, Administrator, under an emergency declaration, if I'm not mistaken, are you allowed to at least do some of the critical business of the county?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we could postpone the public hearings, or can they be postponed to the next commission meeting without any problem?
Madam Chairman, I think, and if we meet tomorrow morning-
I know.
The Commission can choose to table those until the next meeting, as you could, any normal, you know, part of business. So, yes, ma'am. And if you want to table the public hearings-
Suggestions, gentlemen?
I suggest we continue with our regular meeting tomorrow, postponing or tabling the things that would require the public to show up.
I agree.
And just to the next commission meeting. If we need a motion in that, I'll make that motion.
Well, I think we would do that tomorrow. Well, no, we're in, I'm sorry, we're not in work session right now. We're in an emergency meeting. So, yes, we could do a motion right now to table all of tomorrow's public hearings until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Is there a-
Can I collect your budget presentation? Okay.
I think it's significant, too, to communicate to those parties who are expecting to be able to be here and present their case, so to speak, that out of abundance of caution, that we think it best for citizens to stay at home, and that we're only going to be meeting to deal with essential activities, and we'll then get back home ourselves. But I think that needs to be communicated to those parties ASAP.
Is there anyone here today for the work session that was involved in a public hearing tomorrow? Anyone out here? Show of hands?
Mine is just requiring that two contracts, transition programs signed.
Is that a public hearing, though? No.
No.
No. We got some rezonings and a liquor license, I think. Is that the only public hearings we got?
I have two public hearings.
It's a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Those can wait. Okay.
Just action items that we can act on without having to have the public come from wherever to our site. So, I think that would be mine, and if we need that in the form of a motion, I'll be glad to make that.
Is there, on the liquor license, is there a-
Is this the one for? Okay, I'm trying to find it right now.
Give me a minute to think here.
Is the person here for the liquor license today?
I don't think so.
No.
The one, the liquor license is for Bubblestone LLC, Bubblestone.
I say we proceed with that because those are pretty much, I mean, they've already been vetted.
So, we can act on it without them having to be here?
But they have to be here, don't they?
Well, we do have to-
They don't have to.
They don't have to be here.
That's my question.
So, we can do that one.
Has there been no opposition letters come in on it or anything?
Zach, I've got a question for Zach. This is going to be new for all of us, but what happens if something different happens overnight that requires us that we're not going to be coming in in the morning? I mean, is that a possibility?
I think we need to go ahead and make that decision now, based on, well, the National Weather Service just messaged me on my text, sent me a text, and I'll share that. Track is shifting east to Gulfport.
I don't know that we need to be on, I mean, seriously, I just-
Can we just postpone the meeting until next Tuesday?
Let's just do that. Let's just postpone the entire meeting until next Tuesday. And can we, are there bills that need to be paid? Can we, can we take, can we grant?
If I'm not mistaken, Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, when we go into the work session, go into our work session, from what I remember with my training, that that is a public meeting. All four of us can make motions and seconds in that meeting, and we can take care, if we want to, we can pass the bills today and pay the bills.
You could do it right now.
So, I mean-
I would do it right now instead of in a work session.
No need for that to wait.
It needs, yeah, because this is a specially called meeting, so we can go ahead and take care of that item now. Is that right?
I would prefer you do it right now than in the work session.
All right, but now, are we still in this?
We're in the special meeting.
The special.
We're not in a work session.
Then we'll go into the work session, okay?
So, if I'm understanding you correctly-
Get ready to read your bill, thank you.
Okay.
We'll let Commissioner Davis make his motion.
Let's go to the-
To pay the finances.
The item here.
Okay, I'll have to do it.
EA1.
And Madam Chair, we could do EA2 as well, get all the bills the other way would be appropriate.
Did we not do that up there during our public hearing?
He said he prefer, he said it would be better to do it now since we're-
Just because work sessions are advertised to the public generally as something where it's discussion, and really what we're doing here is we're in emergency, emergency meeting, and we are doing this for the purpose of continuing county business during the state of emergency.
Hang on, Commissioner Davis, I'm going to have to stay out on one of those, too, so.
Are both of you out on that one?
Yes, we are.
Y'all know your numbers? Jeb, you getting it?
Yeah.
Jeb will get you the numbers. It's attached to that, but you can keep that one open so you can read from there.
Okay.
We normally have a nice little packet up here so that we don't have to think.
We're working on the fly today.
We don't make these numbers up. I mean, we really don't. It may sound like that.
Commissioner Davis, I'm going to be number 34.
Okay.
Okay.
And you don't have one.
And I don't have one, okay.
We'll help you.
Okay, yeah, please do. All right, if I could, staff recommendation, we want to pay bills totaling $14,313,159.17 with the exception of those vendors commissioners request to be pulled, noting number 34. Of this amount, $9,743,470.25 is payable to the Baldwin County Board of Education, and $575,121.55 is payable to the Gulf Shores Board of Education for their portion of the county sales and use tax.
Madam Chairman, I second Commissioner Davis' motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, we need a motion to pay item number 34.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we pay item number 34 of the staff recommended bills presented today.
I'm second that motion.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Gruber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Ball has abstained from this vote. Okay?
Madam Chair, if we can go to EA2, which is the interim payments. Staff recommendation is to make the attached interim payments made by the clerk treasurer totaling $3,465,888.39, to make that part of the record.
Okay, so for the record, we will, we've already taken care of those two items. They will not be on the agenda whenever we reschedule the meeting.
Right, that's right.
And in my hearing, that we will reschedule this meeting for next Tuesday. Hang on a second. That would be the 22nd, and we should be good since we don't have, that's our off meeting week.
I wanted to ask one more thing while we're in this mindset that we're in. Wanda, is there anything that's pressing on your stuff that has to be done today?
Well, everything already, like, fast.
Okay.
I mean, we, all of Wanda's items have got times constraints.
That's true.
All right, good point.
So, while we're still in this meeting, Brad, do you recommend we take care of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Will you give us just a second, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
To glare over those?
So, this is in the BE section? All right, give me a second. So this is in the BE section? All right, give me a second.
It'll be part of the rest of them we table.
Okay, so all through BE11, you're saying that BE12 on down is not something that we have to do today? Before October 1st? Okay.
So, Madam Chairman, I'm fine with BE1 through BE11.
As am I.
So I, I mean, if, if everybody else is okay with that, I'll make a motion that we approve items BE1 through BE11 as requested by our purchasing director.
And I'll second that.
Question on BE11 is the resolution for?
Do we want to?
Oh, BE10.
All through BE10?
BE10.
Now, 11 is a.
Fiscal year 2020 year end budget amendment.
There's just an, it's an amendment to this year's budget, not next year's.
Oh, not presenting.
That's that journal entry you got on there that's moving some things around. Did y'all look at that? Did y'all get, if y'all didn't get a chance to look at it, you need to look at it. I mean, it is.
You can, you can hold off.
All right, so Madam Chairman, I'll restate my motion.
Okay.
And I make a motion that we approve items BE1 through BE10.
Okay.
And I'll amend my second to include just BE1 through BE10.
All right, any questions? Discussion? Everybody had a chance to look at all these? I did. I couldn't go to sleep last night, so I got up, looked at them again. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving items BE1 through BE10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that'll be taken care of.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I think the closure of county facilities, I'm not sure if we're clear on that. I know that the EMA Director had recommended that, except for the non-essential personnel. So if we could go back to that again, just make sure we're clear on that as far as the closure of county facilities. This would include the courts as well. And I think, Zach, you said Wednesday, Thursday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday timeframe would be where we're under the gun the most, correct?
Tuesday, Wednesday, and I did just receive an additional update from the Weather Service. So it's clear as of 10 a.m. today, we're gonna be under a hurricane warning. So that will be issued. That is new. And so it's a very serious developing situation. So that is my recommendation, Administrator. Thanks.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
Close the county, okay. So we're gonna do this for Tuesday and Wednesday. We feel comfortable with that. And if we have to, we can always add another day, right? Not that the chairman could.
Right.
Madam, Madam Chairman, I make a, a motion that we accept our EMA Director's recommendation to close county facilities starting tomorrow, Tuesday, September the 15th and Wednesday, September the 16th.
And Madam Chairman, we will coordinate with the presiding judge and the court system as well as all the employees in all our offices to make sure they're aware.
If I could, I want to second this, but I also want to give the chair and the EMA Director authorization from us if we needed to go beyond Wednesday.
They can do that.
That the two of them can do that without us having to be reconvened as a body.
Yes, so Commissioner Ball could just re, add that to his motion to authorizing the chair to close county facilities if necessary due to the emergency for Thursday.
So I'll amend, I'll amend my motion. All the rest of the stuff I said upfront remains the same with the addition that I leave, we leave it up to the chair to make the decisions necessary under our local state of emergency that we declared with closures beyond what we dedicated.
Correct.
Okay. All right, and you're second in that one?
He's second.
And I second, yes.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam Chairman, the next item for consideration is a curfew. This is again our typical tropical weather kind of list we go through. I'm not sure if that's necessary, but I would ask the sheriff if he would potentially discuss that with us if it's necessary or not.
Sheriff?
Yeah, it's, it is. Commissioners, at this time, I don't know that we have a need for a curfew tonight, but I think as Zach has literally been giving minute-to-minute updates, that might change. So my best, you know, estimate right now is we monitor the situation through today. However, I do feel that if particularly we do get into a heavy rain event tomorrow, that one would be warranted on Tuesday night. Keep in mind, if we do get into a very heavy rainfall situation, you have two situations. First of all is the essential life support things, which could be rescue situations. And then you also might end up having utility crews out. I do know that two of our larger utility companies today have already started to preposition in some certain areas. They were out early this morning checking low-lying limbs, you know, doing some things that they normally would do when we're expecting a tropical storm or hurricane event. So as of right now, I don't know that one is warranted for tonight. We can maybe, I know we've got a couple more briefings today as it goes a little bit forward, but one may end up being considered for Tuesday night depending on the weather. We will start messaging out to the folks particularly, and I think Zach and I are agreement with this, it being it looks as though it's going to be a major water event, to get the message out to the people that usually have flooding issues. You know, it's gonna be the western side of the county, over in that area, the Fish River Corridor, down through Magnolia Springs, Marlowe area, Fort Morgan, of course, becomes a concern. I will tell you that I've already gotten a message that Dolphin Island right now is taking in water. They actually have part of the west end is already underwater with some of the surge that's coming in in Dolphin Island.
Causeway will be.
Causeway will probably end up being shut down, I would imagine. And then, of course, the eastern side of the county and the Perdita River feeder pattern. We always have some issues down there. So those are the typical areas that we monitor and ones that we'll continue to, to look at over the next 24 to 48 hours.
So.
I wanted to ask Brad one thing, just to clear some confusion. I, I want to make sure that when we declared that local state of emergency, that has given that the chairman sole power to communicate back and forth with these guys without having us involved. Am I correct?
For the most part, it depends on what the, the subject matter is.
But I mean, making these little changes like curfews, closing a building.
Yes.
And extending, we don't always have to be called back.
Correct.
To, to be able to vote on this.
Correct.
Just want to, just want to let the public be aware of that.
Yep.
Well, I, to echo what Jeb's saying, I think it's apparent that this commission has full confidence in the people that are in places of decision-making, such as the sheriff and the EMA Director. And the chair would be acting on our behalf and not have to be delayed by bouncing stuff off of us because I don't want to make the decision based on what I think I know. I want to make the decision or we make the decision based on what these two gentlemen know.
Right. It would be, it would be like the recommendation of the sheriff, not my recommendation.
I mean, this is going kind of, I mean, we've gone from a, we're on a hurricane warning now.
That's right.
Yeah, we went from tropical, tropical.
We need to be in a position.
Gust to.
We need to be in a position to, to move swiftly. And you two guys are the ones that generate that activity and we certainly don't want in any way slow that down. Y'all are the ones that are in charge as far as I'm concerned.
And, and just for a point of clarification, in the past, a curfew is usually, our curfews that we usually run are from 9:00 p.m. until, you know, daylight. So we're really just talking about the nighttime hours. We have had some circumstances where we've had them a little bit more extensive, but those have been in the very extreme areas. The main thing is, is people just staying off the roadways during the night because you cannot visualize the water that is ahead of you.
Right, it could be washed out, you couldn't see it, and also power outages. So you can't see even in areas that would normally be lit.
Yeah, absolutely. And with the latest indication from the Weather Service, we are gonna have sustained wind now versus gusts. So that, that's gonna be the difference when it comes to power outages.
Okay, um, okay, I think, I think I understand that. And it would definitely, I want you guys to understand, it would be based on their recommendation.
There you go.
I think you know me well enough, hopefully. And, and remember, if I can't, you're next. All right, next.
Madam Chairman, next item again through our list is us Joey Nunley, county engineer, to come up and discuss debris, vendor placement, and also some of the traffic control measures, if that's necessary.
Good morning. So.
Morning.
Morning.
When it, when it comes to the debris contracts, we've got actually two in place. We've got one for pretty much vegetative type debris, C and D and stuff. And then we've got another one that is probably gonna be the more important one for this storm event if needed is going to be the, what we call it, our, we call it our sand debris contract. And it's, it's mainly utilized for the Fort Morgan Peninsula. And so that's just, as the sheriff was saying, Dolphin Island's already seeing some, some flooding going on on there. If it moves a little further to the east, that flooding event's gonna happen on, on Fort Morgan. And what happens is a lot of the sand is deposited on the roadways and then we've got to mobilize contractors, get out there, remove the sand off the road and then, and haul it back to the beach. And we've got a contract in place. So the, I think the item that would be, the, the appropriate item for y'all to take action on, I guess, would be basically giving me and the chairman the authority to activate that contractor and, and give them a notice to proceed to work if needed. And that, and, and that's, that helps with all the FEMA documentation. All that action has to take place if FEMA money comes into play and, and, you know, we got all our i's dotted, our t's crossed.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion if needed to you and our highway director can communicate and implement whatever disaster debris contract we need.
And I'll second that.
That's fine, sure.
We want to be kept informed, but we do not want to slow the process down. So we're offering you as chair to work with our key, another key department to make the best decision for our citizens.
And Commissioners, as these decisions are being made, we will certainly make sure that everyone's in the loop with the text messages and emails and phone calls if necessary.
Because we will get calls from citizens, as they should, if they need information and we want to be sharing the correct information.
Is that, does that need to be a motion or is that?
Well, I think we're in a state of emergency.
That's a regular contract. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need any action, especially since we've declared emergency. It's already nine o'clock, so we're, we're in it.
And I'm mistaken, that, that's just a regular contract. In the past, all it was, all it was, all that has to happen is it's a contract in place and Joey just needs to activate it right in there.
The reason it's confusing to me is because we made a motion for her to talk with Zach. We made a motion for her to talk with the sheriff and I was just trying to cover all our bases. I mean, I, I understand the.
Oh, did we make a motion on the sheriff?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well then.
Madam Chairman, I think we're just doing, we want to make sure you guys understand what the, what the decision points are gonna be made, right?
We can be consistent, yes. Okay, so we got a motion by Jeb, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Not? No? Yep? No? Okay. Just like I said, this will be all based on their recommendation because they're the experts. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, next item to discuss is, ask Terry, solid waste. We do have some critical needs that are out there and just, I think she wants to update you on what her plans are as far as they go.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think I want to hear that 11 o'clock call to see what those wind speeds are gonna be, but probably when, Tuesday and Wednesday garbage pickup would be Friday and Saturday. That's my plan for right now and we'll see what happens. But once it gets 30, 40 miles an hour, we don't want the trucks on the road.
Right.
Trash cans blowing everywhere. Trash blows. Is that what, is that right, Sherri Lee?
Madam Chairman, the next, the last two items I think we need to discuss. One, you have a letter in front of you. We've had requests from Fort Morgan and others to request the governor to close the beaches. And also the other thing to discuss would be, is there a need to include any kind of evacuations or anything like that? I'll ask, I think Zach has already addressed that at this point, Zach, as far as evacuations and.
As far as evacuations, there's not a recommendation for evacuation at this time.
So that brings us just to the letter to the governor, asking her to close the beaches. Again, this will help with some of the safety concerns with people getting in the water and so forth, what we've seen historically.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, to adopt the letter, I think we need to have a motion.
I don't have the letter.
I don't have the letter either, but.
The thing, the thing is, you know, those are, those are, it's all private beach down there.
Not the parts, we're talking about the parts that we have access to.
Or responsibility.
Or the responsibility that we maintain. Joey, am I right?
This would be, the beach area down there, right? This would be very similar to the COVID situation where the, where the mean high tide to the, to the water.
It says closing all Baldwin County beaches effective, so that means every beach.
We're really asking the governor to do that.
Right.
Right. We're just asking her.
Yeah, we're just asking her.
And whatever she decides would be what she decides. It's just a request. Is that right?
Correct.
It says all Baldwin County beaches. I mean, can that, is that, can that be misinterpreted? That the beaches that we don't have any control over, like Orange Beach and Gulf Shores?
Obviously, the governor's office will make that decision. But the way I interpret it is similar to what we did with, with the COVID situation when the beaches were closed then.
It's, it gives a definition. The term beach is defined as the sandy shoreline abutting in the Gulf of Mexico with a privately or publicly owned, including beach access points.
I, I'll make a motion that we send the letter to the governor.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, that, that concludes our comments as far as the special meeting. And again, as these decisions are being made, we'll make sure that everyone's informed. We'll contact each of you, make sure you know what's, what's happening as we make these decisions as far as the services go.
Madam Chairman, I do have a couple of questions for Zach before we conclude this meeting.
Yeah, we.
So now, Zach, with this being done, what activation level stays the same with your office, right?
We will be activation level one effective noon.
Okay.
That's a, that's a full activation. Obviously, we will choose what critical pieces will be a part of that activation. That's, that's why the system works so well. It doesn't have to be all hands on deck. Certainly with this, we know the areas where we're gonna need assistance. We've already mapped that out and I want to share that back to the directors in the county so they can assist us. We already have a county incident management component and so I'll start discussing with them on who, what, and when.
One more, something that I deal here with in my district, as you well know, is river stage flooding. What, what are we looking at with that?
So in the briefing yesterday, I was able to ask the Weather Service, but with that, the Weather Service knew the, the tone I took and the concern I had over the rivers, especially in the northern part of the county, well, really everywhere now, but in the northern part, we were really looking at. And, and so he sent me a resource that is a projected, it's a prediction based on the actual given river systems. And at one point in time, one of them, worst-case scenario, was telling us to be ready for 25 feet. So obviously, it gives you the worst-case scenario, it gives you the best scenario and you have to figure it out somewhere in the middle. But if you look at all of the predictions, the majority of them are at or above the major flooding stage and that's what has my attention.
I guess I have a question for, I, I've gotten a few phone calls from people who live like in Orange Beach who lost vehicles in the 14, 2014 floods, those kind of things. It came up and it flooded their, their properties that are along the canal, I guess you would say. What, what, what is any suggestion to these people? I mean, you're saying no evacuation, but do they need to, it's seeking higher ground, not evacuation, but do they need to protect their property?
Yeah, so in this case, it will be mitigate against loss of property in life. Obviously, water's very deadly, but property.
Animals and property.
Yeah, individuals in this area, for instance, there's.
Horse people.
Yeah, there's, there's section down and like if you look at the Marlowe area, down 32, Kenny Drive specifically, they have a really good system where they actually run their vehicles up to an empty lot and park their vehicles on higher ground. And what we're trying to do is make sure they know that, that is something that they need to look at. So the, so the, the amount of water that will build is unknown, but certainly that what, what they'll do is take protective action, protect their property and, and themselves beginning today.
Okay, all right, so.
And we'll be communicating to the citizens, in effect, what we're saying that we're doing as a county and recommending that they do is, it's where I'm from, you talk about hunkering down. And in some cases, down is where you need to be and in some cases, upland is where you need to be. But have your plan in place. But have your plan in place, put it in motion, and we'll keep our fingers crossed and pray that we don't have it as bad as we might. But we gotta be prepared in case we do.
And Commissioner Davis, Madam Chair, to your point, it's very, certainly appreciated to explain the complexity of what we're discussing. It's so widespread. What we cannot do at this time is, is particularly say, this area, this area. It's such a widespread, this is not gonna just impact our coastal region now. This is gonna impact extreme areas in northern Baldwin, and all of them are equally important to all of us. And so, what I want the message to be is, is regardless of where you are at this point in time in the county, if you've had flood issues in the past, you can expect to have those. However, there may be some that have not experienced flood issues or had flood issues in their area that could see flooding from this. To what extent, it, it's a best guess at this point. But what we want to do is provide the best information for individuals to make personal decisions to protect their property, to protect themselves.
Okay, thank you.
I do have another question, Madam Chairman, because this is the, even though we don't have direct conversations like, or, how to put it, people are gonna want to know about the schools.
That's right.
And I, and I, and I've already missed a call from, from them, but I don't know if, if they've made a decision yet or not. But I would, while, while we're here today, I mean, that's the calls that we'll be getting, emails we'll be getting, and I just always refer those over to the Baldwin County Board of Education since they make those decisions. But if there's a way that you can find out what the school closures are, if any, are gonna be.
Yes, we'll have a county, we've had regularly scheduled county phone calls where it's just all of our county entities, the schools have been on there. They've, they've been the frontrunner in, in decision-making on their behalf. So, we are in contact with them. We're sharing the same information with them that we shared with you today. And as we gain knowledge of what those decision points are, we will help disseminate that as well. As of right now, I know the decision points are day-to-day, and as soon as we receive that, we will, we will share those out as well.
Okay, before we leave out of this portion of this special meeting, before we go to the public comments, press comments, and just Commissioner comments, been reminded that we did not officially make a motion and vote on it to postpone the meeting till next Tuesday. So, we, if, if that is what we desire to do, then we need a motion to actually do that.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we postpone